Distinguished ambassadors, colleagues, Executive Secretary Osborne, I am advised by the Executive Secretary that we have the required quorum and we can proceed with the meeting. I am pleased to welcome you to this final regular meeting of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development for 2024. Colleagues, I now submit for your consideration the Draft Order of Business Document CD/OD-152/24, which has been circulated to all delegations. If there are no objections, I propose that the order of business be adopted as presented. With no objections, it is so decided, approved. Colleagues, today we pay tribute to a special someone, Dr. Maurice Robert. This council, today this council will not only attend to the matters of development, but will take a moment to pay special tribute to Dr. Maurice Robert, former Director of the Department of Economic Development at the OAS, Executive Secretariat for Integral Development, and to many of us, a dear friend and colleague. Dr. Robert served at the General Secretariat of the Organization of American States from 1996 until 2024. She worked as a Principal Specialist in the Trade and Economic Development Section of the Department of Economic Development since July 2003. Later, in April 2012, Dr. Robert was appointed as Director of the Department of Economic Development until her separation from services on September 21st, 2024. Those of us who knew Maurice know that she was a dedicated employee of the OAS, who worked tirelessly to implement our many mandates in the areas of trade, tourism, culture, science and technology, competitiveness, MSMEs and others. With a career at the OAS spanning three decades, we are profoundly grateful for her service to this organization and by extension, the people of the Americas. As the representative of a CARICOM country, I knew firsthand of the particular attention she paid to Caribbean member states and would like to place on the record of this august body, our gratitude. I now invite you to please stand and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Maurice. Thank you. I now invite delegations who may wish to refer to this issue. Canada, you have the floor, sir.
Merci, Madame le Président. Au nom du gouvernement du Canada et de ma mission, j'offre nos plus profondes condoléances à la famille, aux amis et aux collègues de Maurice. I would like to thank you, Madam Chair and the Secretariat, for organizing this agenda item today and for all those who've participated in acts to remember and commemorate Maurice Robert over the last few days. As many of you know, Maurice was a pillar of the OAS and in particular of CEDI. She dedicated over thirty years of her life to improving the lives of people in the Americas through her tireless work. Indeed, she was one of the very first Canadians to join the Secretariat of the OAS after Canada became a full member of the organization in the nineties and was the longest-serving Canadian at the OAS when she retired earlier this year. Maurice was viewed by us in my mission as a fantastic ambassador for Canada, demonstrating values that we hope represent the best of us. That is to say fairness, compassion, dedication, and a commitment to human rights and improving the lives of those less fortunate than herself. She was humble, but I think as many of you know, tenacious when she believed in a cause. Those who knew Maurice are well aware that she was not a fan of public recognition for her work and her contributions. But I believe it would not do her justice if we failed to acknowledge the profound contribution that she made to the OAS and to so very many people across the hemisphere during her life and her career. Although Maurice is no longer with us, her legacy will live in each of us and in all those she touched throughout her life of service. We will miss you, Maurice. Tu vas nous manquer. Merci, Madame le Président.
Thank you. I now give the floor to Brazil.
Obrigado, Presidente. A delegação brasileira soma-se às manifestações de pesar pelo falecimento da doutora Maurice Robert. É realmente uma grande tristeza para nossa região perder de forma tão prematura uma profissional de grande mérito e mais do que isso, uma colega de trabalho sempre amigável, comprometida e bem-humorada. Em seu longo período como diretora do Departamento de Desenvolvimento Econômico, a doutora Robert colaborou com nosso hemisfério em iniciativas de grande complexidade e diversidade. As comunicações diplomáticas da Missão do Brasil têm referências à doutora Robert desde o ano de 2007 e dizem respeito a áreas tão distintas como turismo, micro pequenas e médias empresas, empreendedorismo, competitividade e inovação, trabalho e integração comercial. Em todas essas áreas, ela deu uma contribuição fundamental para avançar os propósitos comuns desta organização. Esperamos que a memória e o legado da doutora Maurice Robert possam servir de inspiração não só ao próximo diretor ou diretora do departamento, mas também a todos os funcionários interamericanos e a todos nós delegados dos países estados membros da OEA. Finalmente, a Missão do Brasil deseja transmitir aos amigos, próximos e familiares da doutora Maurice Robert suas mais profundas condolências. Muito obrigado.
Thank you Ambassador. I now give the floor to Bahamas.
Good morning and thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to thank you ever so much for placing this item and remembrance on the agenda and no less at the outset of this morning's proceedings. I join those extending deepest condolences to the family, both biological and professional, of Director Dr. Maurice Robert and celebrating the life of service that she lived. Dr. Robert was the standard of international public service. Over the course of the thirty years of service here at the OAS, she fully devoted and poured herself into the work and by extension, she devoted and poured her activity into the economic development of the people of the Americas. As the Chair so rightly communicated, Maurice had a special affinity to the Caribbean and we held her in high regard for her keen interests of our region. While her work, like much of the work of the OAS, was under-resourced, over the course of the twelve-plus years she served as Director of the Economic Development Division at the OAS, her department over-delivered intangible impact for the region and she assisted and stewarded new and innovative programming such as the Americas Competitive Exchange, Small Business Development Center project, the Youth Academy for Transformative Technologies. Her strong academic bona fide is clearly informed her approach to policy development and she also added immense value to the work of CEDI because of her strong understanding of the culture and political dynamics of the hemisphere and its subregions. Dr. Robert was also and always an advocate for ensuring that CARICOM countries did not get abandoned or left out of consideration for any projects or programs that she was affiliated with. And for this, the Bahamas in particular will always be grateful. Dr. Robert leaves incredibly large shoes to fill for her successor and she will be missed dearly. We are assured that her legacy of service and impact will continue to bear fruit in the years ahead and will continue to serve as inspiration and a model of service and leadership for us all. As a matter of an aside and for full disclosure, my delegation has requested legal guidance in respect of the contribution or the funds that Maurice has provided in her dedication for those resources to be exempted from the ICR. Upon receipt of the legal advice, my delegation would advise all and if the advice is such that there is no avenue, my delegation will be pursuing a dedicated resolution and we look forward to the support from other member states. Thank you kindly and God bless her soul and may she rest in peace.
Thank you Ambassador. I now give the floor to Senatorina Grenadins.
Thank you Chair. Former Director of Economic Development in CEDI, Dr. Maurice Robert was a beacon of dedication. Her commitment to the development of entrepreneurial initiatives geared towards women and towards building a 2030 vision for the micro, small and medium-sized enterprises in the region is undeniable. Dr. Robert, a former lecturer at the University of the West Indies Cave Hill Campus in Barbados, showcased her fast commitment to technical training for experts in the region to improve its productivity and competitiveness. She recognized the relevance of innovation in improving economic growth and advocated for public policies to reflect that. She was indeed a stalwart in the realms of trade and economic development, innovation, technology, culture and tourism. To those who had the pleasure of working her, pardon, those who had the pleasure of working with her will attest to her effective work in the field and to her excellent personal attributes. My delegation is deeply saddened by her passing and expresses gratitude for the legacy she leaves behind in our hemisphere. We comfort them and thank her family and friends for allowing us the privilege and honor of sharing in her light. We extend our deepest condolences to her family and friends. Quel repos un peu, repose un peu, chère Maurice. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Ambassador. I now give the floor to Peru.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. El día de hoy nos congrega un motivo solemn y profundamente motivo: rendir homenaje a la doctora Maurice Robert, quien en vida fue una destacada profesional, líder visionaria y gran amiga de nuestras naciones. Desde su labor como directora del Departamento de Desarrollo Económico, Maurice supo encarnar los valores más elevados del multilateralismo, el trabajo conjunto y la cooperación solidaria. Su reciente partida nos deja un vacío difícil de llenar, pero también un legado que nos compromete a seguir avanzando en los ideales que ella promovió. En nombre del Perú, deseo expresar nuestro profundo agradecimiento y admiración por su incansable dedicación a las causas del desarrollo económico, la cultura, el turismo y particularmente su apoyo decidido al fortalecimiento de las micro, pequeñas y medianas empresas en nuestra región. Gracias a su impulso y liderazgo pudimos concretar importantes mecanismos de colaboración que hoy benefician a innumerables emprendedores y comunidades. La cultura y el turismo, dos pilares fundamentales para nuestras identidades y economías, también encontraron en Maurice una defensora incansable. Con ella compartimos proyectos que no solo enriquecieron nuestro presente, sino que sentaron bases para construir un futuro más integrado y dinámico en toda nuestra región. Hoy, mientras lamentamos su partida, nos comprometemos a honrar su memoria continuando el trabajo que ella tan generosamente lideró. El Perú se une al sentimiento de pesar de sus seres queridos y de toda la comunidad interamericana con la certeza de que su ejemplo seguirá inspirándonos a todos. Descanse en paz, querida Maurice, y gracias por haber dejado una huella tan profunda en nuestra historia común. Gracias.
Thank you Peru. I now give the floor to the United States.
Thank you Chair. The United States joins other delegations in this council in expressing our deep sadness at the passing of Dr. Maurice Robert earlier this month. Her distinguished career at the OAS was marked by unwavering dedication and significant contributions to economic development and cultural diplomacy in the Americas. As Director of the Department of Economic Development within the Executive Secretariat for Integral Development, Dr. Robert's leadership was instrumental in advancing initiatives in science and technology as well as competitiveness, micro and small and medium-sized enterprises, tourism and as I mentioned, culture. Her department's role as Technical Secretariat for Hemispheric Ministerial in high-level meetings facilitated meaningful collaboration and progress in all of these critical areas. Dr. Robert's academic achievements were equally impressive. As has been noted, she earned a PhD from the Fletcher School of Law Diplomacy at Tufts University and a master's degree in applied economics. Her expertise was further honed through her work with the World Bank, the United Nations and the private sector, particularly on telecommunications issues. She was also an academic and lecturer at prestigious universities like the University of West Indies and the George Washington University. The US mission to the OAS had the privilege of collaborating closely with Dr. Robert on numerous development projects, including the Americas Competitive Exchange and the Small Business Development Centers program. I had the privilege of assisting, working with her and saw the invaluable work and contributions she's made to these programs. Her wise and steady leadership was pivotal in the success of these initiatives, which have had a lasting impact on the region's economic landscape. Last year, Dr. Robert was also a steadfast supporter of US efforts to highlight the legacy and impact of cultural diplomacy in the Americas, particularly through the universal language of music. Her vision and leadership ensured that these efforts, coordinated in the context of Pan-American Day, resonated deeply, showcasing the power of cultural exchange to unite and to inspire. The work was a testament to her belief in the transformative potential of culture and her commitment to fostering greater understanding and cooperation in the region. Beyond her professional accomplishments, Dr. Robert was known for her intelligence, her kindness, integrity and unwavering willingness to assist others. Her personal qualities left an indelible impression on all who had the fortune to work with her. She exemplified the very best of Canadian contributions to the OAS. An individual whose dedication and character elevated our shared mission and strengthened the bonds among member states. On behalf of the United States, we extend our heartfelt condolences to Dr. Robert's family, colleagues and friends during this difficult time. Her absence will be deeply felt, but her contributions will continue to inspire and to guide us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Ambassador. I now give the floor to El Salvador.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Mi delegación agradece la inclusión de este muy merecido homenaje en memoria de la doctora Maurice Robert, quien hasta hace poco tiempo se desempeñó como directora del Departamento de Desarrollo Económico en la Secretaría Ejecutiva para el Desarrollo Integral de la OEA. Hoy nos asiste una profunda tristeza por su pronta partida e irreparable pérdida. Extendemos nuestras más sentidas condolencias a su familia, amigos y a su equipo de trabajo en la CEDI. La doctora Robert fue una incansable trabajadora que amaba lo que hacía, comprometida con el trabajo de esta organización y como se ha destacado en su trayectoria, además de su brillantez profesional, reflejó siempre una profunda entrega para impulsar el desarrollo económico de nuestra región y mejorar la calidad de vida de nuestras sociedades. Su capacidad para fomentar la cooperación entre países y sectores, su incansable trabajo en el diseño de políticas inclusivas y su enfoque hacia la sostenibilidad del desarrollo económico fueron solo algunas de las características que definieron su gestión. Ella entendió como pocos la necesidad de promover un desarrollo económico que fuera equitativo, accesible y orientado al bienestar de todos los pueblos de las Américas. Hoy, mientras lamentamos su pérdida, también celebramos su legado que perdurará a través de los proyectos y las iniciativas que dirigió. Su trabajo contribuyó de manera significativa a que nuestra región avanzara en la creación de un futuro más justo para todos nuestros ciudadanos. Señora presidenta, las almas grandes no desaparecen, dejan huellas eternas, echan fuertes raíces, multiplicas sus semillas. Por eso decimos que nuestra preciada Maurice ha sembrado tanto en este hemisferio y en nuestros corazones que siempre estará presente sus frutos y nunca será olvidada. Siempre recordaremos a esa mujer buena, honesta, generosa, amable, dispuesta a colaborar y de gran calidad humana. En nombre de El Salvador, reiteramos nuestras más sinceras condolencias a su familia, amigos, colegas y a todos aquellos que tuvimos el privilegio de trabajar junto a ella. Su partida deja un vacío profundo, pero también una inspiración para continuar el legado de trabajo que ella inició. Que descanse en paz la doctora Maurice Robert. Muchas gracias.
Thank you El Salvador. I now give the floor to Honduras.
Buenos días a todos, colegas. Muchas gracias, presidenta, por incorporar este tan importante homenaje para la doctora Maurice Robert. Maurice fue siempre amiga cercana a Honduras y los países de Centroamérica, así como los del Caribe y el resto de la región. Ella personificaba el espíritu integrador americanista, multilateralista, y eso siempre lo tuvo muy presente. Tuve el enorme privilegio de poder haber trabajado con ella como parte de ese equipo por un poco más de diez años. Y dentro de ese tiempo, cuando me integré a ese equipo, cuando era un diplomático aún más joven, ella fue, me recibió en un momento de transición, siempre con los brazos abiertos, siempre con un espíritu de compartir todo lo que tenía que ofrecer y así lo era con todo el mundo. Siempre estaba dispuesta a a cuidar a sus equipos, a cuidar a las personas alrededor de ella. Y eso se demostraba, por ejemplo, cuando había escenarios en donde hay escasez de recursos para fondos regulares, para fondos específicos, consultorías. Ella siempre hacía todo lo posible por asegurar que la estabilidad de su equipo estuviera ahí. Y menciono esto, presidente de equipo, porque esto es tan solo un pequeño reflejo de, en este caso, el valor humano que ella tenía. Ya todos sus colegas han compartido bastante sobre sus méritos profesionales y académicos, los cuales son muy importantes, pero yo quisiera, a través de mi intervención, destacar el valor humano que la doctora Maurice Robert tenía. En mi caso personal, fue una mentora, ¿verdad? Aprendí muchísimo como un joven diplomático en ese proceso, ¿verdad? Y ha forjado quien soy hoy, ¿verdad? Más de diez años trabajando junto a ella, aprendiendo. Y esa única carcajada, muy única de ella, ¿verdad? Una risa que contagiaba, ¿verdad? Y las perspectivas de siempre mirar las cosas del lado positivo. Para todos siempre había una forma, una mejor forma de visualizar las cosas y una alternativa que eventualmente, con un poco de calma y serenidad, nos podría llevar a los resultados que buscábamos. Esas son solo, tan solo algunas de las lecciones que me llevo de esos privilegios de dos años que tuve de estar con ella y su equipo. Para el Estado de Honduras es también, por supuesto, una pérdida muy sensible. Siempre fue muy cercana, particularmente a través de los programas de small business de las pymes que con mucho éxito se llevaron en el triángulo norte, en Centroamérica y, por supuesto, los programas de competitividad. Muchas gracias, presidencia, de nuevo por sumar este espacio a la agenda.
Thank you Honduras. I now give the chair to Costa Rica. Ambassador, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. También le agradezco haber incluido este punto en nuestra agenda de hoy. Buenos días a todos. Nos reunimos también con ustedes en el profundo pesar que nos une para despedir a una profesional ejemplar, una servidora comprometida con los principios del desarrollo y la integración hemisférica, nuestra querida doctora Maurice Robert. Desde la Misión Permanente de Costa Rica queremos rendir homenaje a su legado y su trabajo en esta organización, a su dedicación incansable como directora del Departamento de Desarrollo Económico y Social. La doctora Robert no solo entendió los desafíos de nuestra región, sino que trabajó con pasión y precisión para promover un crecimiento económico e inclusivo, sostenible, que beneficiara a todos los Estados miembros de esta organización. Su liderazgo fue una fuente de inspiración. Con visión estratégica, buscó siempre conectar a las Américas en proyectos de cooperación, innovación y fortalecimiento institucional. Su generacidad profesional y su calidad humana dejarán una huella imborrable en esta casa de las Américas. Costa Rica recuerda y agradece su compromiso con los valores de igualdad y desarrollo que todos compartimos. Maurice Robert fue más que una funcionaria destacada, fue un puente entre nuestras naciones, una voz firme en el progreso y una amiga de todos en este hemisferio. Que su memoria sea un faro que nos guíe en los días venideros, recordándonos que el servicio público, cuando se ejerce con entrega y con ética, trasciende las fronteras y trasciende las vidas. A sus familiares, seres queridos y sus compatriotas, nuestro más sentido pésame y solidaridad en este momento de dolor. Que encuentren consuelo en saber que su legado vivirá en cada iniciativa que impulsó y en cada persona que inspiró. Hoy hemos escuchado muy lindos testimonios de ese trabajo y de ese legado que nos deja la doctora Robert. Descanse en paz, querida Maurice. Costa Rica honra su vida y su invaluable aporte a nuestro continente. Muchas gracias.
Thank you Ambassador. I now give the floor to Paraguay.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. La delegación del Paraguay se suma al pesar por la partida de la doctora Maurice Roberts, acompañando a su familia, colaboradores y amigos en tan sentida pérdida. Coincidimos plenamente con el sentimiento expresado por las delegaciones que nos han antecedido, destacando la dedicación, profesionalismo, apertura y sensillez de la doctora Roberts en su valioso servicio en esta organización. Su memoria nos anima a continuar la lucha por el desarrollo integral en nuestra región. Descanse en paz, doctora Roberts. Muchas gracias.
Thank, excuse me, thank you. I now give the floor to Mexico.
Muchas gracias, señora presidenta. Ara y serie a la secretaría, la proyección del video con el mensaje de mi delegación.
La delegación de México se suma a este tributo póstumo a la doctora Maurice Robert, exdirectora del Departamento de Desarrollo Económico de la Secretaría Ejecutiva para el Desarrollo Integral y expresa el más sentido pésame por su fallecimiento a su familia, sus amigos y a la OEA. Valoramos ampliamente la destacada labor y compromiso de la doctora Robert en favor del desarrollo integral de la región, particularmente del desarrollo económico promoviendo la cultura, el turismo, el comercio, la competitividad, la innovación y la tecnología en la organización. Fue una colaboradora dedicada e invaluable en el avance de iniciativas. Fue una colaboradora dedicada e invaluable en el avance de iniciativas y prioridades que México impulsó en el pilar de desarrollo. Su entusiasmo y respaldo fueron fundamentales para contribuir a construir alianzas y concretar proyectos en el campo del desarrollo integral de nuestro país y de la región. Su amplia trayectoria de servicio e incansable labor como funcionaria contribuyó a avanzar en la cooperación interamericana dejando un legado de empeño, determinación y solidaridad por la causa de las Américas. Maris Roberts demostró ser no solo una profesional excepcional, también fue una persona cálida, amable y afectuosa. México se despide con especial estima de la doctora Roberts. Su ejemplo de vida nos inspira a seguir trabajando por lograr una región libre de pobreza y desigualdades. La recordaremos con especial afecto y respeto por sus aportes y su dedicación al trabajo interamericano durante décadas. Muchas gracias.
Thank you Mexico. I now give the floor to Jamaica.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Jamaican delegation, we'd like to pay tribute to Maris Roberts and to express our deepest condolences to her family and friend. Maris Roberts will be greatly missed for her knowledge, her dedication and her high level of professionalism, but most importantly, her willingness to assist at all times. She epitomizes a great human being and above all, a caring person. Her talent was unique and she was very special. Jamaica takes, also takes privilege and honor in honoring her life. May her soul rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you Jamaica. I now give the floor to Ecuador.
Muchas gracias señora Presidenta por la palabra. Nuestra gratitud por incluir este tema en la agenda. A nombre de la Misión Permanente el Ecuador deseamos unirles al reconocimiento póstumo que se realiza a la doctora Maris Roberts, quien se caracterizó por su excelente formación académica, un exitoso desarrollo profesional y un grato dote de ser humano. Varios aportes ya han sido anunciados por las misiones que me presidieron en la palabra. El legado que deja la doctora Roberts es muy vasto, sobre todo en el desarrollo integral para todos los Estados. Para el caso particular del Ecuador, se puede citar temas de cultura, turismo, pequeñas y medianas empresas, ciencia y tecnología, entre otros. Maris siempre tuvo las puertas abiertas para aceptar y realizar propuestas que permitan mejorar el bienestar de los ciudadanos, de mi país y del hemisferio. En este sentido, la Misión Permanente desea expresar sus más sinceras condolencias a la familia de la doctora Roberts, así como el reconocimiento por toda la contribución que ha realizado tanto al Ecuador como a los países que conformamos esta organización. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you Ecuador. I now give the floor to Executive Secretary Osborne who will share her thoughts.
Thank you Ambassador and good morning distinguished representatives and alternate representatives, colleagues, all. At the outset, I would like to thank you Madam Chair and all Member States for taking the time in today's meeting to honor the memory of Maris Roberts, a remarkable individual whose legacy will forever be etched in the history of the Organization of American States and in the hearts of all who had the privilege of knowing her as a dear friend and colleague. As cliché as it may sound, it is indeed a friend who left us too soon. Maris dedicated her entire professional life to her work at the OAS and carried the ideals of the OAS deeply within her heart. She believed that the work we did in SEDI and indeed the wider OAS had true impact, whether it was negotiating trade agreements which ensured fairness and transparency or helping MSMEs digitize so that they could remain competitive or connecting communities and countries through the Americas' competitiveness exchange. Maris believed in the transformative power of the OAS. She would often remind us of the tremendous opportunity this place afforded us and the great responsibility we have to ensure its success. For those of us who worked with her, we know that she was exceptionally loyal to those she cared about. I benefited from that loyalty. She would defend her staff and her department tooth and nail, especially when it came to her budget. She enjoyed the diversity of the OAS body but had a particular affinity for the Caribbean. She was a visiting lecturer at the University of the West Indies Masters in Trade Program, which was created by the OAS, an assignment she looked forward to for many years. She cared deeply about Haiti and we often spoke of what we hoped to do once the situation in Haiti stabilized. She always sought to bridge divides, build relationships and foster a spirit of solidarity. Maris's impact was not confined to her professional achievements alone. She was one of the most generous persons I've ever known. Whatever the cause at the OAS, post-disaster relief, GoFundMe campaigns, a Christmas party, a celebration, a lunch, a colleague in need, Maris was the anonymous donor with the large contribution. And as was mentioned earlier there, she also contributed at the end a fund to the Department of Economic Development. She did so willingly and quietly. She was not one for self-aggrandizement. Something that I always say, told her was very Canadian. She was very proud to be Canadian at the OAS, proud above all to be Quebecois. She adored her family and spoke of them often with me. As I have fielded calls and texts over the past weeks, over the past week from all over the Americas, I have come to understand Maris's role as a mentor, a collaborator and a friend. Her wisdom and kindness touched countless individuals. Maris believed in the power of empathy and understanding and her ability to listen, support and uplift those around her will forever be remembered. Her commitment to the values of the OAS extended beyond her desk or the meeting room. She understood the importance of inclusivity, of recognizing the diverse voices that make up our region. She understood very clearly that true progress comes when we embrace our differences and work together in harmony to create a better future for all. As we remember Maris today, let us reflect on the lessons she imparted through her actions. Let us honor her memory by continuing the work she so passionately believed in. Let us strive to embody the same values of cooperation and unity that she demonstrated throughout her life. Maris's legacy lives on in the work of the OAS and in the many lives she touched. Though she is no longer with us, her spirit and her dedication to building a more inclusive and equitable region will continue to guide us, inspire us and remind us of what is possible when we work together with purpose and conviction. On behalf of the Executive Secretary at for Integral Development and all of us who were privileged to know her, I offer my deepest condolences to her family, her friends, her colleagues and especially her team. I share in your grief but I also share in the pride of having known such an extraordinary woman. May Maris's memory be a blessing and may her legacy continue to inspire us to live life on our terms as she did, ever mindful that tomorrow is not promised and that we should always do today whatever we can to bring out the best in our fellow travelers. Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you Secretary Osborne. I know that this is a particularly difficult moment for you and your team. My deepest sympathy to you and the entire SEDI team. Thank you all for the sentiments expressed. The OAS was a better place for having a dedicated staff member like Maris Roberts. She will be greatly missed. Colleagues, we now move on to item three on our agenda, the report on the 22nd Inter-American Conference of Ministers of Labor, which will be presented by Colombia. The Minister for Labor is not available this morning, she was supposed to have joined us virtually. The 22nd IACML convened ministers of labor from across the hemisphere to address pressing labor challenges and develop actionable solutions. The conference focused on advancing a future of work grounded in peace, social justice and climate action, one that is inclusive and recognizes the essential role of dignified work in overcoming the socio-economic disparities and inequities of our region. Under the leadership of Minister Ramirez Rios, the conference achieved concrete agreements designed to strengthen labor systems across the region. These mandates from the ministers of labor will shape future ministerial collaboration under the SEDI framework and guide the ongoing work within the IACML process. I now give the floor to the representative of Colombia.
Muchas gracias señora Presidente y permítame iniciar expresando las excusas en nombre de la señora ministra Glorine Ramírez quien no nos ha podido acompañar finalmente el día de hoy por motivos de agenda y sobre todo expresar un saludo fraterno a usted señora Presidente, ya todos los Estados miembros en su nombre. Y me corresponde el día de hoy entonces por esta razón presentar este informe sobre la 22ª Conferencia Interamericana de Ministros de Trabajo que se realizó en la ciudad de Bogotá. Quisiera iniciar entonces destacando el excelente nivel de participación que tuvo la conferencia que ha superado promedios históricos. Veintiséis Estados miembros de la OEA representando a todas las subregiones, quince ministros y siete viceministros, una fuerte representación sindical y empresarial tanto nacional como regional a través de órganos consultivos de la CINT como COSATE y SEATAL. Asimismo, diez organismos internacionales, la OIT a través de su director general, la OEA a través de el secretario general adjunto, la CAF, la CEPAL, el BIT, la OIM, la OIS, la CIS, ONU mujeres y la OBT. En términos de resultados, Colombia quisiera destacar la aprobación de la declaración y plan de acción de Bogotá que marca una nueva hoja de ruta para las Américas en materia de trabajo y empleo. Contienen grandes consensos regionales sobre las prioridades y acciones que deberíamos seguir en el hemisferio. Resaltamos los compromisos claros y fuertes para atender los efectos de la transformación tecnológica y la inteligencia artificial en el empleo, incluyendo el trabajo en plataformas digitales, garantizar transiciones justas en el camino hacia la sostenibilidad ambiental, mejorar la formación y el desarrollo de habilidades para empleos verdes, azules y digitales y fortalecer el diálogo social y la inclusión laboral. Esta conferencia marcó un hito dentro del proceso en la OEA. Es la primera vez en sus sesenta años que la CINT se refiere de manera directa a temas ambientales, cambio climático, la agenda de descarbonización y el rol de los ministerios de trabajo en esta materia. Señora Presidente, permita destacar que como gran conclusión de esto, la ministra ha resaltado el debate amplio y constructivo, el intercambio de estrategias y planteamiento de acciones regionales sobre temas medulares del trabajo como la transformación tecnológica y su impacto sobre el empleo, el cambio climático y la transición justa, diálogo social y la inclusión laboral. Termino por destacar algunos asuntos como la declaración conjunta de sindicatos y empleadores COSATE y SEATAL que acompañó la declaración ministerial. Esto es un tema muy valioso como fruto de la negociación y el acuerdo entre los actores sociales que como las delegaciones acá tendrán en mente no siempre se logra. Se profundizó además y se refrendó el diálogo y la cooperación en las Américas con un subrespaldo fortalecido a la Red Interamericana para la Administración Laboral. Y por último, destacó la elección de las nuevas autoridades de la CINT, en cabeza de los ministros y ministras de Panamá como futura presidencia, las Bahamas en su calidad de presidencia del Grupo de Trabajo uno, Paraguay del Grupo de Trabajo dos y las delegaciones de Barbados y Brasil con las vicepresidencias del Grupo uno y Chile y Guyana con las vicepresidencias del Grupo de Trabajo número dos. En este momento quisiera hacer un especial agradecimiento a estos países y esperamos continuar trabajando de la mano para llevar a cabo todos los objetivos que nos hemos planteado. Frente al camino a seguir corresponde ahora elaborar el Plan de Trabajo 2025-2027 de la CINT para materializar los compromisos de la declaración y el plan de Bogotá. Para esto las autoridades nos reuniremos en una reunión de planación en Washington en fechas aún por definir. Estaremos tratando de confirmar tan pronto como sea posible para que esta reunión sea tan exitosa como lo fue la reunión ministerial. Adicionalmente, la secretaría ha enviado a cada ministerio un cuestionario para asegurar que sus prioridades e intereses estén reflejados en dicho plan de trabajo. Para Colombia es un honor y un privilegio presidir este proceso ministerial por los próximos tres años y reiteramos nuestro compromiso para hacer realidad los mandatos acordados en Bogotá y seguir construyendo con todos ustedes un futuro del trabajo en las Américas que cimente la paz, la justicia social y la acción climática. Por último, un especial agradecimiento a la secretaria ejecutiva Osborne, al director Jacomán y a María Claudia Camacho por todo su trabajo. Muchas gracias señora Presidente.
Thank you Colombia for this detailed and insightful report. The leadership of Minister Ramirez Rios in guiding the IACML and driving these initiatives is central to our work in support of labor development across the Americas. My apologies. Go ahead with the video.
Colombia biodiversa, bañada por dos océanos, cubierta por el verde amazónico, los páramos andinos y los manglares costeros, llena de riqueza cultural, de diversidad en su gente que con su trabajo impulsa su desarrollo. Esta Colombia promueve en este momento importantes cambios y reformas sociales con el anhelo de garantizar derechos laborales, equidad, justicia social y ambiental. Esta nación, que es potencia de la vida, acogió en su capital Bogotá a los treinta y cuatro Estados miembros de la Organización de Estados Americanos para celebrar la 22ª Conferencia Interamericana de Ministros y Ministras del Trabajo y debatir a la luz de los nuevos retos de la humanidad el futuro del trabajo en las Américas, cimentar la paz, la justicia social y la acción climática en armonía con una región y un mundo mejor. Este pujante país, el país de la belleza, recibió por los siguientes tres años la presidencia de la Conferencia Interamericana de los y las Ministras del Trabajo de la Región. Nuestro trabajo mueve al mundo.
I am pleased to offer the floor to Executive Secretary Osborne who would like to address this matter.
Thank you Madam Chair. Simply to say, to bring to Member States' attention that we will be circulating for your, for your use, for your perusal, a publication that we shared at the Ministerial on Labor. I unfortunately was not able to attend the ministerial at the last minute due to illness but it was a tremendous success. The meeting of ministers of labor is always one that is very well attended by our countries. They're very fully engaged throughout the three years that we have between ministerials and this publication highlights the work that we undertook in partnership with other organizations during the previous three years, 2021 to 2024. We're very proud of what it contains. We think that there are lessons learned for all our ministries of labor, experiences that can be shared and we wanted to make a copy of it available to all of you, an early Christmas present if you will. So with that, we'll pass this around and I hope that if you don't have, we have a few more copies. If capitals do not have copies and you would like some more to send to capitals, we're happy to share the limited copies that we have. I would like to commend María Claudia Camacho who heads the Labor section within the com- I would like to commend Maria Claudia Camacho, who heads the Labor section within the context of CD for her work in putting this together. She was instrumental in making this happen, and we're very grateful for all that she continues to do within the context of labor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Secretary Osborne, for providing additional insights into the Secretariat's efforts in supporting the labor process. I commend you and the labor team for your outstanding work and dedication. The floor is now open to delegations wishing to address this matter. And I'll give the floor to Honduras.
Muchas gracias, Presidenta. Quiero públicamente dar un agradecimiento al Gobierno de la República de Colombia por el esfuerzo y el liderazgo presentado a través de este proceso ministerial, a la Misión Permanente de Colombia también, que se hizo notar muy desde temprano en el proceso. Y menciono la palabra proceso porque muchas veces pensamos en las ministeriales como el destino, la reunión donde en este caso se realizó en Bogotá y que surgió con mucho éxito, pero el éxito de esta reunión justamente radica en ese proceso que Colombia lideró a través de su ministra Glorines Ramírez desde un inicio, a través de esos procesos y de reuniones preparatorias, en donde nos hizo constatar su liderazgo, el calor humano, que fue muy importante para que eventualmente llegáramos con los documentos, con el Plan de Acción y la Declaración ya en consenso a Bogotá. Ya estando en Bogotá, confirmamos lo que sospechábamos, y va a ser una gran reunión, y ya lo mencionó el delegado de Colombia, con una muy alta participación de ministros y viceministros. En el caso particular de nuestro ministro de trabajo, él se fue sumamente satisfecho, motivado de estar en esa reunión, tuvo la oportunidad de conversar con sus pares de Estados Unidos, Canadá, Brasil, El Salvador, entre algunos otros, y avanzar importantes conversaciones que no se dan con frecuencia, señora Presidenta, entre los altas autoridades de trabajo, y eso fue algo de muchísimo valor. El tema que escogió la presidencia de este proceso, que tenía que ver con el futuro del trabajo ante las tecnologías emergentes, es también de muchísimo valor, ¿verdad? Y estamos solamente en el principio de ese proceso. Ya luego tendremos esta semana una reunión también de ciencia y tecnología, en donde tendremos también algunos otros matices de esta gran temática que pues nos confronta y que como países tenemos que estar preparados, y en el caso del trabajo, por supuesto que lo tendremos que estar ahí también presente. Por supuesto, el éxito y el liderazgo de Colombia tiene un componente muy importante que ver ahí y es el de la participación y el acompañamiento de la Secretaría. Secretaria Osborne, gracias a usted y a su equipo por ese liderazgo y acompañamiento que han ejercido en ese proceso. Realmente tuve la oportunidad de estar en Bogotá y presenciarlo, no solo el proceso pero el éxito de la reunión, y cuando, por supuesto, menciono a la Secretaria Osborne, estoy mencionando a Jesús Jacomán, a María Claudia Camacho, a Claudia Salazar y a todo el equipo de la Secretaría que ha estado ahí involucrado por meses de trabajo. Por último, Presidenta, quisiera mencionar un poco el trabajo que viene hacia adelante, y eso es la participación en los grupos de trabajo, cuente la presidencia, y en este caso Panamá también, a quienes deseamos el mayor de los éxitos ahora que toma la bandera y se prepara también para sus organizaciones con el apoyo de Honduras en este proceso. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Honduras. And I'll give the floor to the United States.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The United States would like to express as well our gratitude to the government of Colombia, to Minister of Labor Ramirez Rios and the OAS Technical Secretariat for their tireless and thoughtful efforts, which made the Twenty-Second Inter-American Conference of Ministers of Labor a great success. Our Labor and Employment Ministries play a pivotal role in helping to support sustainable development through our region as they work towards adopting and implementing responsive policies. By working together, we have an opportunity to address some of the biggest challenges impacting our workforce, including the effects of emerging technology, gender inequality, and the transition to environmentally sustainable economies and societies. The United States looks forward to continuing to work with the OAS Secretariat and member states on the implementation of the Plan of Action of Bogotá. We look forward to future opportunities to learn from and collaborate with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you all for your comments. I had the great pleasure of attending the ministerial in Colombia in my capacity as Chair of the CD, and I witnessed firsthand a very robust dialogue among ministers. I would also like to express my deep gratitude to Minister Ramirez and the government and people of Colombia for the kind hospitality afforded me during my stay and their successful hosting of the meeting. If there are no further comments, I propose that the Council take note of the report on the Twenty-Second Inter-American Conference of Ministers of Labor and express its gratitude to Her Excellency Gloria Aines Ramirez Rios, Minister of Labor of the Republic of Colombia and Chair of the IACML for her outstanding leadership. With no objections, it is so approved. Colleagues, we now turn to the, excuse me, we now turn to the consideration of the draft resolution, physical connectivity to promote regional trade, investment, and integration for economic growth, as pre-agreed during the informal meeting of CD held on December 3, 2024. This resolution represents the collective effort of our member states to address one of the most critical drivers of sustainable economic development in our region: physical connectivity. Over the course of our discussions this semester, we identified key areas where enhanced connectivity can unlock opportunities for trade, tourism, and regional integration while fostering inclusive and sustainable development. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to all member states for their thoughtful contributions and constructive engagement throughout the drafting process. Your collaboration has resulted in a resolution which charts a path for strengthening collective efforts to tackle the pressing physical connectivity challenges facing our hemisphere. The floor is now open to any delegation who would like to refer to the resolution. Colombia, you have the floor.
Gracias, señora Presidente, y permítame agradecerle a usted particularmente por su liderazgo en la redacción original de esta propuesta de resolución. Colombia simplemente quisiera hacer un pequeño comentario de forma respecto al párrafo resolutivo cinco, perdón, resolutivo cuatro, sobre la oración final, el apoyo de los Estados miembros en sus esfuerzos por mejorar la conectividad. Quisiéramos que dirigiera la conectividad física para mantener unidad con el resto de la resolución y eliminar esa coma que estaba después de conectividad, que digamos en términos de simplemente de lenguaje no debería ir ahí, debería conectividad física, subnacional, coma nacional, coma regional y subregional, simplemente para hacer ese pequeño ajuste. Gracias, señora Presidente.
Thank you, Colombia. If there are no further comments, I propose that the Council adopt the resolution reflecting the amendments presented by the delegation of Colombia. With no objections, the resolution is hereby adopted, including the amendment presented by the delegation of Colombia. We now move on to item five, which is other matters. I invite delegations to raise any additional issues they wish to bring to the Council's I now give the floor to Costa Rica. Ambassador, you have the floor.
Muchas gracias, señora Presidenta. Nada más tomo la palabra para agradecerle todo su liderazgo en representación de este Consejo Permanente durante el periodo de la presidencia que ejerció Santa Lucía, Embajadora Darius Clark, su trabajo, y además fue un placer acompañarla como su vicepresidenta durante este periodo. Podemos dar fe a todos los miembros de este Consejo, que su compromiso y su dedicación han sido fundamentales para impulsar iniciativas clave para el desarrollo sostenible de nuestra región. Reconocemos además también, por supuesto, todo el apoyo que ha recibido durante su periodo de ejercer la presidencia de parte de la Secretaría. Les agradecemos muchísimo todo el trabajo que realizan y también, por supuesto, siempre lo hacemos extensivo a los oficiales de sala y a los intérpretes.
Thank you, Ambassador. I now give the floor to Ecuador.
Muchas gracias, señora Presidenta, por darme la palabra. Me uno a las felicitaciones vertidas por la Embajadora Solano en el reconocimiento por el trabajo realizado en este segundo semestre. La Misión Permanente el Ecuador desea mencionar a las bases del proyecto Mail Art organizado en el marco de la Comisión Interamericana de Cultura y cuya presidencia tiene el Ecuador y que gentilmente la CD circuló. El objetivo es presentar una exposición de Mail Art de artistas femeninas de los Estados miembros de la OEA. Estas cartas o postales deben ser realizadas por un artista de un Estado miembro y deben estar dedicadas a otras mujeres artistas que las admire, agradezcan o sientan la necesidad de hacer algo. Es del caso mencionar que esta propuesta también tiene la colaboración de la Secretaría Permanente, de la Comisión Interamericana de Mujeres, del Museo de Arte de las Américas y, por supuesto, de la Secretaría Ejecutiva para el Desarrollo Integral. De igual manera, se espera lanzar esta exposición con ocasión del Día Internacional de la Mujer en marzo de 2025, por lo cual se considera importante que los Estados miembros se encuentren representados. En este sentido, el Ecuador desea reiterar la invitación para que participen de esta propuesta. Muchísimas gracias, señora Presidenta.
Thank you, Ecuador. I now give the floor to Brazil.
Muito obrigado, Presidente, y obrigado también por los trabajos, la conducción de los trabajos a frente de esta comisión, este consejo. Yo gustaría solo muy rapidamente convidar a todas las delegaciones presentes o interesadas a permanecer en el recinto después del encerramiento de la sesión para asignatura, una rápida ceremonia de asignatura, de un memorando de entendimiento entre Brasil y la Secretaría Ejecutiva de Desarrollo Integral, que permitirá apoyo financiero a estudiantes del Caribe que se deslocarán a Brasil para realizar estudios de graduación. Mucho obrigado.
Thank you, Ambassador. I see there are no further requests for the floor in that regard. Allow me to express my sincere gratitude to all delegations for their active participation and cooperation over the course of this semester. Before we adjourn, it is my honor to congratulate the incoming Chair of CD, Ambassador Luann Ghélène Gilchrist, Permanent Representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines to the OAS. Ambassador Gilchrist, I extend my best wishes as you assume this important role. I have every confidence that under your leadership, CD will continue to grow stronger and will continue to effectively address the challenges we face in the region while expanding opportunities for dialogue and cooperation. Rest assured of my full support. Since this is the last meeting under the chairmanship of Saint Lucia, allow me to express my profound gratitude to all of you for your support, collaboration, and dedication throughout this period. It has been an honor to serve as the Chair of this august body, working together to advance the development priorities of the Americas. I also wish to extend my profound appreciation to Executive Secretary Kim Osborne for her guidance and leadership throughout my chairmanship. Your commitment to the work of this committee and CD is invaluable. Please convey my best regards to your entire team for their support during my chairmanship. We would not have achieved as much as we did without their commitment. I also wish to thank my team at the Permanent Mission of Saint Lucia. Esteemed colleagues, as we close this year's work of CD, I wish you all a joyful, restful holiday season. May you find time to enjoy the company of loved ones. Let us return in 2025 with renewed energy and commitment to our shared goals. Thank you all for your participation, your collaboration, and dedication. The Executive Secretary has requested the floor, and I cannot deny her that privilege. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, thought we had it in your script, but we did not. But thank you so much, Ambassador, for your leadership of the CD. It has been a joy working with you. Your sense of humor is contagious, and I just really, really enjoyed the time that we've spent together. Chair in the CD is always a challenge. There's so many issues to address, and we always try to ensure that the Chair is well-supported, that the priorities that she put forward are well addressed within the context of CD, trying to bring the best speakers that we can to the table, but it requires a Chair who cares, a Chair who's engaged, a Chair who really wants to move things along, and that is the kind of Chair that you've been over these last six months, Ambassador Darius Clark, and we are truly grateful on behalf of the Secretariat. My deep thanks to you for your leadership of this body, and we hope that we'll see you in every CD going forward. We'd love to have you at every other ministerial as well, but that may not be possible, but we hope that you are able to come to join us, continue to join us in CD. Thank you so much. And since this is our last CD for the year, I also want to take the opportunity to thank all of our member states. Your presence, your support animates our work. It really strengthens the CD. We're so grateful. I'm always so overjoyed to see permanent representatives, to see our alternate representatives so engaged with us, and the work that we do, whether it be through the committees that we have within the context of CD, the Management Board, the CAM, the Committee on Policies, the various Inter-American Committees, the preparatory meetings for the ministerials. You've all been so engaged with us, and we're so very grateful. This is what matters. We try to tell people of the important work that we do in CD. We're not always heard. We try to let our actions speak for itself through the work that we do in the Secretariat, but at the end of the day, the support of member states is what keeps this going, and I'm truly grateful, and I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of myself and the team at CD to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whichever way you celebrate, and we look forward to a bright and prosperous 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Secretary. I tried my best. I now give the floor to the United States.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. On behalf of the US Mission, I would like to thank you, Chair Ambassador Elizabeth Darius Clark, for your dedication to advancing the work of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development. We are also grateful to Vice Chair Ambassador Solano. We are also grateful to Vice Chair Ambassador Solano, as well as Secretary Osborne and the entire CD team. During your time as Chair, you have demonstrated outstanding leadership and dedication to support CD and its mission to strengthen member states' cooperation towards substantial progress in promoting integral development across the hemisphere. Your term has focused on a critical and timely topic for the region: physical connectivity to promote trade and regional integration for economic growth. Your thoughtful facilitation of discussions ensured a productive and engaging semester and supported member states' cooperation towards progress in promoting integral development across the hemisphere. Ambassador, on behalf of my delegation, I would like to express our appreciation for your leadership to this council. Your chairmanship has supported stronger partnerships aimed at tackling shared challenges to promote regional trade and integration across the Americas. The US Mission looks forward to continuing to work with you as Permanent Representative of Saint Lucia to advance shared goals and sustainable development. Thank you.
Thank you, United States. I give the floor again to the Secretary Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I seem very talkative in this session of the CD. Simply, I forgot to mention our dear Vice Chair Ambassador Solano. Thank you so much, Ambassador, for your support, not only of this session of CD, but your constant support to the Secretariat and to our work in CD. I simply did not want the meeting to end without recognizing and thanking you. Thank you.
Ambassador Solano, I also say thank you to you for being my Vice Chair and always reminding me of your support and I appreciated it very much. Thank you so much. As we end this meeting, I wish oh, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, it is my intention to prolong this meeting since it has been uncharacteristically short. Chair, on behalf of the group of CARICOM countries, I extend a sincere gratitude to you for your stewardship of the CD. You have advanced many of the region's priorities during your six-month tenure. I thank also your Vice Chair, the Permanent Representative of Costa Rica, for her support to you and, of course, our gratitude is extended in equal measure to Executive Secretary Kim Osborne and her team. Now, the team at CD manages quite a huge portfolio within a shrinking fiscal space and I would like to repeat to you what our Prime Minister says to us, that we are to do more with less and you are indeed doing a lot more with a lot less, Executive Secretary Osborne. And so, the CARICOM states pledge, I've arrogated the authority to speak on behalf of the CARICOM states. We pledge our support to the Executive Secretariat for Integral Development because development is a very important pillar, one of the four pillars on which the OAS stands. It is a very important pillar for small island developing states such as ours in the CARICOM region. Our priorities might often get lost in the wider picture in the hemisphere, but our priorities are nonetheless no less important than those which are variously articulated very loudly. So, thank you very much and I do pledge that Saint Vincent and the Grenadines will continue the stalwart work which has been done by Saint Lucia. I did not say Saint Lucia and the Grenadines. I said Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, okay? We will seek to continue to on the same path which has been established by Saint Lucia and by Saint Kitts and the Nevis. We plan to continue on the theme of connectivity. You will shortly see the work plan that Saint Vincent and the Grenadines has elaborated in consultation with the Executive Secretariat for Integral Development and, of course, at this point, we enlist your support and the support of the incoming the incoming Vice Chair of CD. Y con estas pocas palabras, muchas gracias. Feliz Navidad a todos y a todas. How do you say Merry Christmas in French? Joyeux Noël. Joyeux Noël. A tous et à toutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ambassador. By extending my chairmanship by an additional three minutes, much appreciated. I will miss chairing this committee. Happy holidays and to those of you who are going home, I wish you safe travels. This meeting of the Inter-American Council for Integral Development is now adjourned. Before you stand, I would like to remind you that Brazil would like your attention. Brazil? Thank you. Stay put.
Eu vou abrir uma exceção hoje e falar em inglês porque é um dia especial dirigido aos nossos colegas do Caribe. It is with great satisfaction that we stand here today to sign this memorandum of understanding between the OAS and Brazil to foster greater participation of students from the Caribbean countries in the Brasilia Undergraduate Exchange Student Program, PEC-G. This MOU represents a milestone in our shared vision of strengthening educational ties in the Americas, particularly for students from the Caribbean. With this agreement, we hope to increase the participation of Caribbean students in PEC-G, an initiative that has been promoting human capital development and international student mobility among developing countries since 1965. Through PEC-G, international students can apply for undergraduate studies in fields ranging from medicine to engineering and more than 100 higher education institutions in Brazil, both public and private. No tuition fees are charged to the students during their entire course of study and there are no pre-established quotas for countries. Only a bilateral cooperation agreement on education is required. Although most Caribbean countries have a cooperation agreement on education in Brazil, the participation of Caribbean countries in the program has not reached its full potential. In this sense, we hope this MOU will help change that. In 2024, eighteen students from Caribbean countries have been selected for the program: nine from Jamaica, three from Suriname, two from Dominica, two from Guyana and two from Trinidad and Tobago. Thanks to the MOU, these students will receive financial aid of around $4,000 each to help them settle in their destination. Of the selected students, thirteen will be admitted to health science courses, seven to dental medicine, five to medicine, one and I forgot my paper here. And one to nursing, sorry. Sorry for that. It's English. It's not my mother tongue, you know? So, I'm excused today to make this kind of mistake. We were pleased to notice that thirteen of the students accepted are women. After graduation, these women and the five men that were also selected will return to their home countries and apply the knowledge they gain to improve the societies they live. We hope to improve these numbers next year and have more students from all Caribbean countries participating in PEC-G. For this, we will count on your invaluable assistance and the valuable assistance provided by the OAS as well, which will help promote the program and the opportunities it offers. Finally, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Secretary Osborne and to the entire Department of Human Development, Education and Employment of the OAS for their continued support and partnership. We look forward to seeing this collaboration bear more fruits and strengthen the bonds that unite our peoples through education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ambassador. The goal of ensuring that every young person in our region has the opportunity to pursue higher education cannot be overstated. For many, however, the means of securing that goal remains elusive. Many are constrained by costs, some by a lack of knowledge of the opportunities available to them, while others are challenged by geographic location. For us in the Caribbean region, education is seen not only as a vehicle for upward mobility but as a critical element in ensuring productive citizenship. From very tender ages, parents, Caribbean parents, instill in their children that education is the key to success. This mantra permeates our societies regardless of socioeconomic status, race or ethnicity. With persistently high unemployment rates, which is directly linked to increasing insecurity in our societies, there is an urgent need to address the existing gaps in access to higher education so as to secure our communities and the future of our countries. Similarly, there is a recognition that the transition to the knowledge economy requires not only education of our young people but the acquisition of the diverse skill sets which are needed to drive our development. The threat of climate change and the rapid need to adapt also brings with it the need to acquire a number of climate-smart skills to ensure that the region has the built-in capacity to prepare for, respond to and recover from the climate-driven threats. It is for these reasons that this scholarship program being offered by Brazil is so timely and relevant. It responds to the urgent needs of our region and provides our young people with opportunities to explore diverse fields of study which would otherwise be cost prohibitive and by extension unattainable. Since its inception in 2011, Brazil's Education Cooperation Program within the context of the OAS has benefited hundreds of students across the hemisphere at the graduate and postgraduate level. And this PEC-G program for Caribbean students is slated to allow hundreds more at the undergraduate level, the area of greatest need for the Caribbean, to attain a university education. We are pleased, as OAS CD, to ensure that some funding from the scholarships program can go towards subsidizing this program to guarantee that more students have the opportunity to access it. Students from our region will have the opportunity to study in Brazil in numerous fields free of charge, as the ambassador stated, only needing a subsistence allowance. It is our hope that this allowance provided by the OAS Scholarships Program through the agreement that we signed today will allow the students selected this year to pursue their dreams. Ambassador, please convey our deepest appreciation to your government and the people of Brazil for this most generous offer of cooperation. For us in CD, we would simply not be able to meet the demands of our member states without the substantial support provided by Brazil. When I started discussions with Brazil in late 2017 to specifically offer undergraduate scholarship to address the Caribbean's needs as expressed by our governments, I had only expected a handful of offers. This program far exceeds my expectations and I am beyond grateful. I want to commit that in 2025, CD will do more in outreach and publicity to ensure the highest level of participation in the program. We urge the governments of the Caribbean to join us in making this remarkable program more widely available to all people across the region. As early as January next year, I will begin the awareness campaign so that every high school graduate knows about this program and how they can benefit from it. My thanks again to you, Ambassador, and the team at the Permanent Mission, Siro Larissa Jackson Lima, who has left, for their support on yet another partnership between the OAS CD and Brazil a reality. Thank you so very much. Thanks, Ambassador.
Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Chair, I take this opportunity to thank the Permanent Representative of Brazil for the work which he has invested, which he and his team have invested in seeing this cooperation agreement reach this point today, the point at which it has been signed by the Executive Secretary. I equally thank Secretary Osborne for the work that she has invested in this, to bring this to this point. Madam Chair, it is undeniable that education is essential for building prosperity and reducing poverty in our region. And so, it is within this context that I remind that before us in the Permanent Council, we have a lot of work to do on reducing poverty and I'm pleased to see that the government of Brazil is focusing on the reduction of poverty in the hemisphere and specifically in the Caribbean region through the promotion of opportunities for our youth to participate in educational services which could enhance not only their personal and familial development but also the development of their communities, their nation and the region. So, I reiterate on behalf of the CARICOM Group our sincere gratitude which, Ambassador, we are asking you to convey to your principals in Brasilia. I thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Saint Vincent. I now give the floor to Jamaica.
Thank you very much, Madam Executive Secretary, Ambassador Brazil and Ambassador of Saint Lucia. In the interest of time, I won't repeat the names. You all know the names. It remains of me not to say thank you to both the CD and to the government of Brazil for the very, very kind offer of the scholarships which undoubtedly will serve to strengthen particularly our health sector at this time. It's no secret that after COVID-19, there's a tremendous demand for healthcare workers and so particularly the scholarships have been targeted, they have been well thought about and we thank you very, very much on behalf of the government of Jamaica. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamaica. I see no more requests for the floor. And this meeting is adjourned. Happy holidays.
The Committee on Policies meeting will begin. The conferences need a five-minute break and then the meeting on Committee on Policies will begin.